It's after six and we are going to get back in session. This is the regular city council meeting of June the 24th. We have pledged already, we will do a roll call once again to see if Brad's still there. For the purpose of establishing a quorum, we'll have roll call, Ward one.
Here.
Ward two.
Here.
Ward three. His name's still on there. Ward four?
Here.
Mayor, here. We do have a quorum.
I'm here, Mayor.
First item on this agenda is citizens to be heard. Do we have anyone that's registered to be heard?
No one.
Does anyone want to be heard? We've heard a lot of people already. So much for that. We have a thing next on the agenda that is a pleasure for me to do. This is an interesting thing when we have an opportunity to plug some of our folks that work for the city and work for all of y'all that are here to see what we do for a living. And they do it well and get recognized for it. It's important for y'all to know about it. Our Parks Director, who has done all sorts of good things, Brittany has worked real well with the Parks people and they have done some really exemplary things. She wrote this up for me so I wouldn't leave anything out. So I'm gonna read a thing for you here. This is about archery. If you remember William Tell and shooting the thing off somebody's head, we got some people come down and learn how to do that kind of thing. So, they have been teaching people about archery. Said, "Our Parks Department has been recognized by Texas Parks and Wildlife for the Archery Advocacy Award." And she would like to take a moment to explain just what that means and why it matters. "This award honors efforts to promote archery as a valuable outdoor activity, especially in public spaces. Our team earned this distinction through several key initiatives. First, they advocated for and helped establish a public, open archery range, a new asset to provide safe, accessible recreation for residents of all ages. Second, multiple Parks staff members became certified archery instructors." That's a big deal, which means that we can offer programs to teach and teach safely, engage directly with the public in hands-on way. And third, they went above and beyond by volunteering at the NASP State Tournament, helping hundreds of students participate in the sport that builds focus, discipline, and confidence. This wasn't just about supporting a sport, it was about expanding recreational opportunities, strengthening youth engagement, and enhancing our city's outdoor offerings. Their work reflects well not only on the department, but on our city as a whole. On behalf of our Parks Department, I want to thank the council, not that we did much, for their continued support, and I want to commend her staff for their vision initiative, community leadership. We're proud to be recognized and even prouder to serve. I would like all the members of our Parks Board to come up. Now, there's people gonna come with phones and cameras and whatever else and take pictures. We can't get them all squeezed in over there, so it was recommended we might do it right here at the other side of the TV screen. [inaudible] No separate discussion or action on any of these items will be held unless pulled at the request of a member of the city council. Anybody wish to remove any of those?
No, I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. I have a second.
I'll second.
I have a second. Motion and a second. Any further question? We'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. It is unanimous. Next item, ordinances, resolutions, and public hearings. Consider approval of the second and final reading of ordinance 1979, amending the Convention and Visitor Bureau Advisory Board of Directors' requirements, providing a separability clause, providing a appealing clause, and providing an effective date. Anything changed, Ms. Goodwin?
I changed the word receiving to retaining.
All right. With that change in mind...
I'll make a motion to approve of item number four.
I have a...
I'll have a second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further question? If not, we'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. It is unanimous. Next item, consider approval of resolution 2025-18R, appointing a member to fill a vacancy on the Convention and Visitor Bureau Board representing the arts sector. Ms. Goodwin.
So before you, with Louise leaving, that created a vacancy on the board. With that leaving and him representing the arts sector, Karen Ernest?
Ernst.
Ernst. I renamed her. She actually filled out an application and you should have your application in your packet, and she does represent the arts sector.
All right. Questions, council?
I'll make a motion to approve of item number five.
Have a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further question? If not, we'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. It is unanimous. Consider approval of resolution 2025-22R, adopting the Ranges County 2025 Hazard Mitigation Action Plan. Eric?
Since February, well, this is the plan that was being re-adopted. That was from previously five years ago, and we just have to re-adopt the same plan. And we've been working on it since... It's actually a new plan altogether. The old plan was adopted once, and then basically... My name's Mike Gere, I'm Orange County Emergency Management Coordinator, and Orange County led the effort to create the new Hazard Mitigation Plan. Rockport, Fulton, the Nav District and the School District are also hopefully all signing on. This tonight will be number three. Four, we still need the School District to sign on, but then it'll be complete. But this is the extension, or the new creation of, which we can extend later if we need to. But now that we know the path forward for the grants and how to get these done, we'll just get a new one every five years.
Great. Any questions for them, council? All right.
Make a motion to approve of item number six.
Have a motion and a second. Have a second. Any further question? Not, we'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Next item on the agenda, item number seven, City Manager.
That's one point.
Yeah, she wants to talk about it.
Number seven?
Uh huh.
I have had a request from council to, from a council member to pull this. So you will either need consensus or a vote to pull this until all members are present in person.
All right.
Y'all just agree to pull it until everybody's in person. Okay, good enough, you can keep going.
All right. Item number eight, consider the approval of the contractual agreement for administrative management services with Langford Community Management Services for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. DR 4485-0135, that includes pump station generators to be located at Ivy Lane and Texas 188. Ms. Henry.
Yes, sir. Mayor, council, thank you. This is a follow-up to the most recent grant application that we were awarded, and this is just acknowledging that we would be contracting with Langford and that we will be passing through the funds directly to them. So, there is no matching for the city.
Oh, good. Questions, council?
I'll make a motion to approve of item number...
Have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second. Any further question? We'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. It's unanimous. Number nine, consider approval of an inter-local agreement between Orange County and the city of Rockport to install drop box within the parking lot to assist residents in the collection of city documents and payments for utilities, municipal court, Parks and Recreation Departments. Ms. Henry.
Yes, thank you. This agenda item is just an agreement with the city and the county that we can use a location on their property in their parking lot for our drop box. In your packets, there is a photo of what that drop box looks like. We already have it ready. We will not be able to put it into place until they take possession again of the parking lot from their grant that they're finishing up.
Okay. Questions, council? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve of item number five.
Have a motion and a second. Any further questions? We'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. It's unanimous. Item number 10, City Manager.
Item number 10 is the... It's the caper. We would like to pull that. We need a little bit more time to review that, if you guys don't mind. This is one we'd rather have right than right now.
Okay.
Fine, pull it.
Please.
You have a motion?
No. We just need agreement, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm pulling it, so you don't need anything.
Yeah, we're just gonna move it to postponing. All right. Next item, consider possible approval of a proposed mural on the exterior wall of the Rockport Fire Department.
So we have Mural Fest coming up, and we've been approached by Archav in this day to paint a mural on the fire department, and we're looking for agreement.
Okay.
I don't think we have any maybe depiction yet, but I think that would be brought to us for approval before we do anything. But it is honoring first responders. There you go.
Yes, so our Mural Fest would include, we actually have four murals that we are planning. This would be first responders, and it would be appropriate to put on the exterior north wall of the city-owned fire, volunteer fire department building. We do have funding for it. It will have a protective coating on it, so it will stay there for quite some time, and we're seeking approval to do that.
Okay. This is at the main fire station down off Gagon, whatever.
Yes.
Okay. Questions, council?
Have y'all any questions for the fire department?
Yes, good question. Good question. So, I have talked to Colby Rice, who is Assistant Captain there, and he has made his board, or that board, aware. We do have to have approval from them. I don't have a rendition to share with you right now, so there's really not something for them to approve. It will have to go through the Heritage District approval, which is basically Kerry Dietrich will either administratively approve the four mural renditions, or it will go, come to city council for your approval.
Okay.
I'd like to see that come from the fire department, whatever the rendition ends up being, let their board or whoever, their entity...
Absolutely.
...and then bring it to us. As long as they're okay with it, it'd be, I'd like to go that pathway if we could.
Okay.
Jennifer, do you know if it's gonna be the entirety of the wall?
No.
Or the small mural?
No, it's gonna be a very large mural, but if you look at that building, it's huge. It's very big. The north wall, yeah, so it would be in the center, so it would be the majority of the center area. It would still leave space on either side to maybe add to it in years, continuing, because we do plan on continuing Mural Fest and adding public art. That technically is not within the Cultural Arts District, but the funding does not require that to be for this particular mural. Other murals, there are some stipulations around.
Jennifer, when you're including your first responders, would you be sure that we include them on the orders?
Sure, absolutely. It's gonna be the entirety of first responders, whether it's, you know, police officers, EMS, fire department, absolutely. All of them need to be included. I mean, this is a cohesive thing as well as public art.
Okay. Questions, council?
I'll make a motion to approve of item number 11. I'm just gonna add with the, depending on the approval of the fire department.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll have a second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further question? Call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. It is unanimous. Item number 12, City Manager.
Number 12, we would like to pull from the agenda at the request of a council member, so I'll need a consent or a vote. I'm gonna pull it. I'm trying to figure out that one.
I agree. That's fine. We'll pull it. Next item, provide an update on the Rockport Volunteer Fire Department Annual Letter Drive Fundraiser. Robbie?
Thank you, Mayor. As you said, this is just an update we received, and I'm sure y'all probably received. There were a lot of these that did go out, but just wanted to, we received a very well-written letter signed by Jamie McAllister from the Rockport Volunteer Fire Department. It explains what the Volunteer Fire Department is doing. It's purchasing new fire engines and for what they needed donations for, and that's for, to outfit the trucks and maintain operational readiness, and what improvements they do plan to make to better serve the area, and that's the purchase of a drone and a water tanker. So, just providing an update on that, because we do also contribute through the utility, voluntary utility donations.
We have any idea how they're progressing with the donations and so forth?
No, sir. I've not reached out to them. I just wanted to update council on that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Item number 14, provide an update on Housing Bill 2962, seeking to exempt political subdivisions from the miscellaneous gross receipts tax.
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes. The, this, we did a brief presentation on this. We are hoping to be able to save about $1,200, $1,200 a month. That's about what we pay, the city of Rockport pays in miscellaneous gross receipt tax. Unfortunately, that bill did die in committee, so we're not, not gonna benefit from it. So, it's just an update. Sorry.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Number 15, discussion possible directions on hotel occupancy tax, funds, application, and award process for 2025, 2026. Ms. Goodwin.
So it's that time of the year again. It's the time that we are looking at our hot fund grant program again. So, I'm bringing it to you just to see if we wanna streamline some, and we have some recommendations as well. So first of all, I wanted to explain how the city receives hot funds. The 13% is paid by visitors for staying in hotels and vacation homes, rentals. And then, out of that 13%, the city keeps 7%, or we get back 7%, and 6% goes to the state. 6% of the 13% goes to the state. So, if you wanna break that down, it's $7 from a $100 hotel room, and that money can be spent on what the state houses we can spend it on, which is, you know, your different seven categories.
And we increased the categories last year that we...
We did.
We bumped it up by one or two, I think, didn't we?
We did, and bumped it up by one.
Okay.
And this is not working.
If you could just flip her to the next slide.
Okay, so, the hotel occupancy tax, which is what I explained to you earlier of how we collect it, and 2024, the Rockport lodging sector produced $1,177,928. That dropped from 2023, $1,195,074. In 2025, we are, at least I am, predicting a slight increase because of all the marketing and we've done, and we did see this last month start to go up a little.
Shelley, this was after the state's portion. This is just talked about our portion, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, next slide. So here are your, your different steps. Of course, it's a two-step process. The first step has to, every event, every dollar you spend has to bring heads and bets. And so the second step are your state categories. The city has adopted seven. The one we added last year was the sporting event expenses. So the next slide. So here's where I need some recommendations from you and some directions. So we are recommending that, last year, we're recommending that we award, oh, I'm sorry, I lost my place. The seventh category was the marketing, the promotions, and we are recommending that we go ahead and do like we did last year, and we keep that 7%, or you actually award it to the CVB, to oversee the marketing. That way we stay, keep a uniform marketing, and we focus on some large events, and then the city as a whole. And actually, what we have been doing is not just the city, but we've also been marketing Fulton and the county as well. So I would, I need to know if you wanna continue to do that process.
I think we should. I think that increase that you reported supports that this is working, and it's collectively benefiting all of the area versus single entities.
Okay.
I know the promotional work y'all have done, the videos I've seen and like that are really well-done and well-thought of. People that see them mention it to me frequently.
Yeah.
But y'all are doing a good job.
Well, that is gonna be the map now, so...
Thank you.
The second recommendation is the application and supporting documents are required at the beginning of the process. But what we're asking for during the quarterly, when we ask people to report quarterly, that they only give us the quarterly report and the corresponding receipts. So that way, we just have those on record. So, I know a lot of places like to do PowerPoint, or a lot of entities like to do PowerPoints and present us extra. We think those are good, but we just think for your approval, it just needs to focus on the report, how many people they're bringing into town, and the receipts that are backing it up. So, I just need to know if y'all are good with that.
I'm okay with that, yeah.
Any questions? Any opposition, anybody? Yes. I thank y'all. They're good, or... Thank you.
Okay, the third recommendation we have, and this recommendation is so that we build, continue to build the program and make it a strong program. So we are recommending that the city not fund any administrative fees for nonprofit organizations other than The Rock. And the reason why we're doing that is because we have city, a few city staff working, or the tourism management that's working on, and we're using administrative fees for some of that. So we would like to have the funds go more towards marketing, or more towards promotion of the arts or the historic, instead of a percentage of everyone's money that they collect go towards administrative fees.
So let me just add a little clarifier, if you don't mind. I understand that we have a contract with the Chamber to run the CVB that includes some administrative fees. We are not saying that. We're saying if we give you money for an event, if we give you money for Chalk Day, you're not paying your electric bill with the money we've given you for Chalk Day. We have contracts that we have to, that we are obligated to fulfill, so that does not pertain to those.
And then The Rock is one of them, correct?
The Rock, and then, like I said, right now, we have a, we have a contract with the Chamber that we get a portion of a person, we pay a portion of the bills to keep that visitor center open, so...
To my understanding, the administration fee, it's a very, very muddy definition in the actual laws of how you spend hot funds. It probably was something that should have been taken out a long time ago. To my understanding, when I actually read the laws of them, so it's very hard to, to prove that's exactly what it's used for, so...
So they will turn in receipts?
Yeah.
I mean, anybody can lie to us.
Well, they've just put admin fees. Like, that's what they would do on the line. Not saying they're not doing it the correct way, but that's how it reads, and it wouldn't have like an outline of what those admin fees entail, and what it was used for, for marketing or promoting heads and bets.
So it would have to be more broken down. It's certainly up to y'all. This is just a recommendation.
No, I'm fine with it. I'm just clarifying that.
Do we have any idea, have we been paying for administrative fees in the past for nonprofits? And what that, I mean, do we think it's been a lot of dollars going?
I wouldn't say that it's been a lot of dollars. I wouldn't, I mean, I can't tell you if it's been a thousand or 10.
And this won't prevent a particular event that we've gotten used to around here, anything like that. It's not gonna squelch an event or something that the public's looking forward to.
I don't think so.
Okay.
It's certainly not targeted at any event.
We're just asking them to clean up their expenditures a little bit and fund, pay their own electric bill. We'll support the event.
Change is hard, but we're getting it kind of moving what we think is in the right direction, and anyway.
They, I know when I sit on hot funds, how they put it in is just admin fees. It doesn't clarify what it is, and you're really not supposed to be spending hot funds on admin in general, so that's not what it's for, right?
Other questions, comments? Brad, I'm not ignoring you. I just didn't look up there lately. Okay?
Yes, sir, I'm good.
So the fourth one is continue to fund nonprofit associations with the hot grant funding program.
I will say, while we're on that topic, the Navigation District has reached out and said that they would like to seek funding. They are not a nonprofit. My response to the board member that reached out was, if you guys chose to go down the strictly nonprofit path, we still are working with the state to grab, I think it's a 2% hot tax that we can grab that goes strictly to shoreline preservation and somebody not giving, shoreline preservation beach cleanup. So there's an additional 2% that we can grab. So even if you continue with this, I understand that there's a history, and you're saying no to the Navigation District, but also, we are still gonna work towards getting that 2% that would be a designated pot of money for their functions.
I think it's been an ongoing practice anyway, and I still have problems with donating money to a for-profit outfit and increasing their profit. That just doesn't seem to be that's what we're trying to do here.
Very good. Nonprofits, okay. Keep going.
Okay, the fifth one is, and you received on, yesterday in the, your email, you, I gave you a letter that I'm going to send to all the applicants with all the deadlines, and I wanted to make sure that those are okay. Bob, I also sent it to you. Can you pull that up too? So one thing that we did do a little different, we are going to, tonight with the presentation, we'll start advertising, updating everything tomorrow. we'll start advertising, updating everything tomorrow. We'll send out this letter, um, June the twenty-third, fifth through the eighteenth will be the timeframe for us to accept applications. June the twenty-sixth and the twen, and the thirtieth, we're going to do an orientation again. You're not required to go to both, it's just to one. And of course, we will update everyone who comes, let them know what your recommendations and directions were tonight. July the twenty-ninth, you will hold a hot fund presentation workshop where you will make your decisions. Um, September the sixteenth, we will consider a resolution that finalizes everything that you decided. It would just be cleaner again. And then we will start the process for the contracts, and contracts will become effective on October the first. And then on the back, you really don't need to know the, I mean, we don't have to go, there's, it's just different ex- explanations about the criteria and that kind of information. So what I need to know is if you are good with these dates and deadlines. So that's close to, that's close to a month they have to, to...
Questions on those?
How many workshops did you do last year, was it just one?
Just one.
And, and this year you're scheduling two, and you had good attendance last year, I think that's a good... I think that helps.
Any other comment or question?
Okay, back to the PowerPoint, there's one more. This one's gonna get a little, can get confusing. Um, the last page, or second to the last page. Um, here's what we're recommending, is, it's the sixth one, and you really don't have to make a dis, um, decision tonight. It's just for, for y'all to think about. We will talk about it more at the workshop. And so taking the one, I mean, taking, dividing the seven percent down to one cent or one percent. So we were saying that we would recommend using some kind of process of maybe giving four cents to the CBB for their marketing and different recruitment and advertising. Two percent designated for grant funding, and one percent, um, retained by the city to use for all the eligible areas that the state allows it. Some cities do this in five-sevenths to CBB, one and one. Some cities do not give out any grant funding at all, they keep it all. So this is just a percentage breakdown if we, um, and it's just a thought. Instead, so that way we are letting anyone who's applying, we have this pot of money. And so hopefully, it gives everybody an incentive, if you want more money, we go out and start getting more tourism and sales tax dollars in to help out.
Even if you don't choose this breakdown, um, we recommend, and we actually have hired a consultant that recommends that we have a, an adopted breakdown, even if it doesn't look like this, but adopt one, so that everybody's very clear on what's gonna be given out, what's gonna be retained by the city. And it's not gonna be just, um, you know, Vanessa and Shelley rounding numbers every year, it's gonna be a very...
What are we using now?
I'm sorry?
What are we using now, do we have a similar breakdown?
No.
So we're, we're just kinda...
We're winging it.
Yeah, we're just winging it.
And this, we don't have to make a decision on the sixth recommendation tonight? We can think about it, look into it, and discuss it for...
It'll be at your next budget workshop.
Yeah.
And this four, two, and one, if you look at the one cent retained by the city for, uh, you know, is that, is that, is that close to what we're spending? I mean, is it, it's not gonna shortchange you or anything?
Using the figures from last year, um, one-seventh is, um, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty-three cents. So if you said we're gonna give out, you know, two percent, you'd double that. If you're gonna give out three percent for grant funding, you'd triple that. But that's using the money, um, using the figures from last year.
And will that, will that hundred and seventy-eight thousand pay for your facility upkeeps?
I mean, it's gonna be what it's gonna be. Cause increases a little more to the marketing and CBB, and I'll talk a little bit about the results there as to why we would increase that a little bit more. Um, the one cent for the upkeep is new, so we haven't had that in the past.
Okay.
Brittany doesn't get, oh, she won. Brittany doesn't get money for upkeeping the parks, which is absolutely eligible.
Um, the only thing I would like to make recommendation for is that this be reviewed each year, so that we can determine if we wanna make any adjustments to that four, you know, say it's the four, two, one.
I think that's a great idea for you to see this whole thing every year, so that you can take each item and say, are we still on track with this?
Yeah, I would just hate to make it so standardized, that if there can't be adjustments, where adjustments may be needed.
I think it may not be a council presentation going forward, I think we'll do it in a budget work session to see that, you know, because we're just asking for consensus, not a vote.
As long as we see the numbers and, and where it worked, and, you know, we don't wanna be like the nineteen eighty-nine thing where it doesn't get looked at for twenty-five years.
Right.
So the last page, I just wanna let you know what all the benefits are, and we already pretty much... Much more, um, discussed, um, and it has to do with the CBB handling marketing. We have the upcoming website. Everyone, every business owner that is a tourism industry will have the opportunity to upload their information or their event and do free advertisement. It will be a one-stop shop, the tourism, uh, visitors will be able to go look, pick a hotel, or a B, um, Airbnb, or, you know, a restaurant, or things to do with children, that kind of information. So, um, the next one is, is the events. Everyone has the opportunity, again, to submit their events. I did, um, it's the, I'm sorry, second to the last one. That, I did wanna let you know that there is a new social media that is out, it's Explore Rockport Fulton. That has been doing extremely well. Um, it is growing quite a bit, and this will also, it's brought positive, um, experiences and influence on the city. And so, you know, the public will also have an opportunity to be part of that. Um, they will, you know, with the more visitors we have, that spend more money in the local restaurants and other attractions, and it does help with our sales tax, and it does help with, again, with the hot funds. And we are not doing this just for Rockport, we are actually doing it for Rockport, Fulton, and New Ransus County. So the last one is, um, communications. I just wanted to let you know everywhere I'm going to put this information, um, on the city website. We'll send out a press release, and there's about fifty-five people that are part of our press release, so it will go out to all of those, and a lot of those are TV channels. We'll do a social media campaign, we'll add information to the newsletter, we'll email everyone, we're gonna email everyone that applied last year, and then we're gonna run out in the paper directing them to the website. So if you have any other suggestions, just let me know.
Thank you. City Manager's Monthly Update.
Okay, it's a thick one this month, and I'm gonna read every slide, so settle in. I'm teasing, I'm not... What? You make a most into a turn. Again, this is gonna be on the website, if you certainly go through it and have questions, give me a yell. I'll hit a couple of, uh, the high points that I think are important. One of them is development is not slowing down, things keep moving, so I don't know what the rest of the world is doing, but we're building. Oh, I'm not gonna find the page. Um, because I'm gonna go through this pretty quickly. So we're, we're still building, things aren't changing there. The amount of water we're selling, we are in stage three water restrictions. I know it's rained, but that does not mean that that has rained in the right spot. Our water consumption is down considerably. Great if you're conserving water, horrible if you sell water, so we're on both sides of it. The, let me keep going here. Ryan, do you have any up, okay? There we go. There are lots of pictures of what Public Works is doing. I would encourage you to go look, you're gonna see the construction sites. I know that we don't, um, drive the streets every day, but, um, these guys are out in the road, working every day on water lines, sewer lines, roads, something. Please don't try to run them over, how about stop and say hi, maybe take them a soda, I don't know. The fire department is moving along nicely. Police department put a plug in here for the Hundred Club. I would encourage everybody that is possibly able to go join the Hundred Club. It's a hundred bucks a year, we can reduce our coffee and make that. But there's a list of what they provide, have provided for our police officers. Bullet resistant vest, K-9 bullet resistant vest, boat anchor, flashlights for all the officers, and PFDs for all officers. Those are things that your tax money did not have to buy. So a hundred bucks a year, probably a pretty good value. I think they have a meeting too, and you can go. Unspent bond funds, I know that they've been the bane of everybody's existence, but they're rolling nicely. Everything is gonna be spent by the end of the year, Brittany's gone. We're gonna work on that, so that, that is a, a good thing. And then, uh, Robbie also sent the financials out to you guys individually, so y'all have those for your nighttime sleepy reading. And the, oh, sorry, I'm sorry, very exciting graphs and charts that everybody wants to keep. The la, the last thing I'm gonna point out is gonna piggyback on what Shelley said. If you look at the communication slide, it's page twenty-nine. In the last twenty-eight days, our Facebook page has had seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight views, which is up a hundred and fifty-eight percent over last year? Or last month?
Last month.
Over last month. Five hundred and sixty-one interactions, tell us what an interaction is.
Um, someone commenting, liking, sharing.
We're gonna presume for this purposes that all the comments are good. A hundred and thirty-two new followers, five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four engagements, tell us what that is.
That one's a little bit of both, it's also, um, that one is more going back and forth.
To events and things like that, and liking events, and showing interest in events. The most views was on June eleventh, ten thousand views. That was our ice cream, that was our ice cream, uh, social we had. So we had a very good turnout for that. I said this was the last thing I was gonna say, I lied. We had a very good turnout for our ice cream social. We're looking for an opportunity to do one for Matt, I'm sure we'll do one with the mayor. Every, those have had really good attendance, really thoughtful citizen questions, and, um, I personally am enjoying it, and I'm learning as much, I think, as we're, as we're putting out, so those are great. You've got budget, um, workshop coming up July tenth. And then, I have one exciting news, there we go. So Convention and Visitors Bureau has social media account, we just talked about that. City Hall ribbon cutting this Friday, three-thirty. Be there at three-thirty to get the good food, and we will cut the ribbon at four. The mayor, I believe, is speaking, do you know that?
Oh.
Okay, great. The mayor's speaking, I believe Todd Hunter will be here. Senator Cole Course is sending a resolution. That's all I know now. Huge press conference coming, July tenth at the, um, Key Allegro Yacht Club. So mark your calendar, fortify, you'll wanna be there. I'm not gonna tell you what it is. As of today, this is our last city hall, city council meeting in this building, unless something goes really wrong. So next meeting, you guys are gonna be in our beautiful new building, and y'all, we are so proud. It is so beautiful, and I am so grateful. So, don't come here, cause then you'll be laid over there. Um, city newsletter comes out on July first, I'm assuming, if I get my article written. Are there any questions? That was easy.
Thank you. The Board of Council, Ward one.
So as Vanessa was saying, we had our city connection on the twelfth. Um, thank you Vanessa, Shelley, and Chief Anderson for attending. We had a lot of engagement from the community, so I appreciate everybody that came out, asked questions, had a lot of open conversation and discussion. I kind of even would like to attend others moving forward, I think it's beneficial. I had people that weren't even my, in my ward attend, um, and they were just as engaged, so, um, that was a good time. I did get to attend the kids' inves event over the weekend downtown, my daughter actually participated in it. It was the first time we had done that, but they had twenty-four adolescent little entrepreneurs out there selling a bunch of goodies and making some money, and it was amazing. I complimented Chief Anderson's officer award. He came out and spent time with the kids and gave them stickers, and it was such a wonderful sight to see how engaged he was out there, and he took the time to stop and spend time at every single booth, um, for those kids. So that was really nice to see, and I just wanted to ensure that he gave him kudos.
What officer?
Ward.
Ward two.
Ward two is doing good, I don't have anything to report this time.
Ward three, Brad.
Barry, I'm good at this time, thank you.
Okay, Ward four.
Um, the only thing I had is, uh, we had the CBB meeting, uh, yesterday, and that went, um, okay, went well. We're getting there, we have the new, Nanette is now the new, uh, tourism manager, so we're excited to have her, and, um, and I think that's all I have. I mean, I went to...
For Ryan and those that call this building home, I'm sure you're disappointed that all of us that have been with you since August of twenty-seventeen have moved out. But it has been, if we hadn't had this building, we'd have been in a bind. And y'all moving yourselves around and leaving space for all of us to function. I was here when that thing happened, and, and y'all have been amazing help for everybody, and y'all have put up with a lot of, and we appreciate you very much, thank you.
It's lonely without y'all, so...
Enjoy your house now.
It's really quiet, too.
It, it, it's different, but, uh, no, you are just a hop, skip, and away, so.